Meeting to order, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are.
So six of the board members are here, Dawn is absent. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dawn's not here, so someone else will have to.
Ready? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Board committee reports, we didn't have, did community ed meet?
No, they meet the 12th, July 12th.
We didn't have any boards meet since our last meeting. Superintendent report.
Yeah, just a couple of things here, centers around our construction, new aquatic center, we had the grand opening last July 6th, and well, actually, pool opened on July 1st, and then we had free admission for everyone, I think we almost had thirteen hundred people attend and buy admission passes, so there's other people that just came in and toured, so it was amazing turnout. I think people, even though they might have saw pictures on Facebook or the website, they were very surprised, very pleased, very positive after being inside the aquatic center, so again, it's great to showcase that. And also, just think of this, today's July 10th, exactly two months from today, September 10th, we have our open house celebration, where we'll have you know, everything done by that time, all the buildings, so it'll be quite the day. I don't know if anyone, Jerry, you want to comment on the, you were at the grand opening July 6th?
I think you summarized it pretty well, there were a lot of people that came in, they were very impressed, I had some friends come in and they don't swim, but they sure were pleased with what was there, and they thought they could make use of it.
Maybe they'll start now.
Well, actually, they thought that river, they said, maybe, maybe they'll do it, you know, come in in the morning sometime, so no, they were very impressed. Not one negative on the whole thing.
Okay, next we have our principals reports.
Okay, we got our middle school principal, Mr. Brad Gregor, will go first and give us some highlights, talk about the year.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me today. Well, I think to start off with here, in terms of our highlights for the year, the school year was, it was like a blur, it went by really, really fast, and I don't know if that's because I'm getting older, or, but obviously, a lot of different highlights, I'd say, it was really nice to have our sixth grade addition complete, and then for the first time in nine years to have all our sixth graders and staff together at the middle school, along with completion of the auxiliary gym and the fitness room, and everything turned out just outstanding, so that was definitely a highlight. For me, it's, I always enjoy the students, and even though I'm getting older, they keep me young. And so I like, I want to go over some student highlights, so bear with me in terms of some names here, I thought it was really important that I recognize the students for their accomplishments, many accomplishments, so I'll start off with seventh grader Sydney Stanger was selected as a star of the north winner for the, by the Minnesota educators for the gifted and talented, so that was a great honor for Sydney and her work with her academics. In terms of the fine arts, we had a lot of kids recognized for national honor choir, state honor choir this year, national honor choir, we had Mandy Beecher, Amanda Boyer, Sophia Hubner, Greta Matson, Elise Paul, Nora Rosemeyer, Jack McDonough, and Brenna Solhide, that was for the national honor choir. State honor choir, we had Mandy Beecher, who was a repeat winner, Madison Pitska, Riley Praezel, Ashlyn Sawyer, Jackson Shurick, Erica Walsh, Seth Dickerson, Henry Lundine, Jack McDonough, who also was for the national, Ryan Musso, Lindsay Bezek, Noel Francis, Eva Philippi, Brenna Solhide, who also was recognized nationally, and Julian Weikert. Kids had a tryout for these choirs, and obviously, you can see the number of kids were very successful. Band students, we had a number of band students recognized by our South Central Minnesota Band Directors Honors Association for Honors Band this year, and South Central recognized were Andrew Ellingson, Carter Grif, Jordan Henkel, Adam Brant, Aiden Tattersall, Jack Gillis, Jack Thomas, Jess Seduski, John Grams, Owen Hartman, Parker Benes, Riley Usby, Tommy Williams, Grace Matson, Evan Helvick, and Sophia Hubner, and then we also had Jordan Henkel, who was recognized by the Minnesota Directors Honor, Honors Band too, so a lot of great accomplishments by our students, again, they had a tryout for that, they were recognized for that, and then they got to perform with other students across the state who were also recognized for that too, so a lot of great things happening in terms of our, our fine arts too. One thing that we do each year is we do a reading challenge, it's called the A to Z Reading Challenge, and our staff, as long, along with our students, are challenged to read books throughout the year, and it's a competition, it's a friendly competition, and this year combined with our students and staff, seven thousand five hundred ninety-four books were read this year, so you can kind of tell by the importance of, how important our kids take reading, to read that many books, along with, along with our staff too. One thing that, that we did, and we started fourteen years ago when I came in with Tim, when I came with Tim as assistant principal, is we, we've tracked data from attendance to honor roll, to discipline referrals, to participation in fine arts and athletics, so I want to share just a little bit with you in terms of that. It was interesting to see the data over the last fourteen years, and, and the trend data, a lot of it was, was very similar, so some was a little different, so sixty percent of our students made the A and B honor roll this year, which I thought was outstanding. Only, this was the lowest ever, only four percent of our students failed one or more core classes, and I attribute that to some of the things that we put in place over, over the past two years, whether intervention time, and especially our tutorial time, which we have every Tuesday and Friday, half an hour each day where teachers able to work with students who need extra help in any subject area, they can also come in for like reviews for different things that the teachers are doing if they need extra help, and it's also enrichment opportunities in other subjects too, so that was really, really cool to see. And then fifty-three of our students participated in one or more athletic or fine arts activity, even though our sixth graders are limited in what they can do, it's always been around that mark too, so we want to improve on that to get our kids involved in that, in more things too, so that was really neat. In terms of recognizing staff, Kim Borridge wrote a, got, wrote a grant and got through the Education Foundation for Spheros, and doing a lot of coding with those enrichment opportunities for our students. If you're ever in the school and you go by Kim's class, I invite you to take a look at the things they're doing with these, with these Spheros, they program them to do different types of things, and it's really cool, and then Deb Trawortha, working with Kim Franta, got a grant for additional gardens at the middle school. We had to be very flexible with those because of the construction, of course, but they are there, and so we're trying to, you know, get the, it's part of our summer targeted services program where the kids learn different things about science and math, and, and planting the gardens, doing different scientific method tests, measurement things too, so very hands-on, a different type of curriculum for our summer school kids, so we expanded that. One thing that we, we did this past year that was beneficial for our students was the lunchroom, and if you ever come down to the lunchroom, you'll notice that it can be quite chaotic. Over three hundred students in a packed lunchroom, with like sardines down there, but it'll get better because the cafeteria is going to expand coming up here in August, so we initiated a new lunchroom program based upon students' behavior, their cooperation in the lunchroom, and also following procedures, and so the students can earn up to three Trojan cutouts that we keep track of on the wall. When they reach a certain amount, like every twenty-five or every fifty, they earn a prize, each grade level does, so this year, Mr. Bell and I put on some aprons, and we served the students lunch was part of the incentive that the kids reached. We also played some music down in the lunchroom for them as another part of the incentive, and then probably the biggest hit of the year besides Mr. Bell and I serving lunch and wearing aprons and hairnets, we had a beanbag tournament at the end of the year, so the kids really liked that, and so really, you know, the bottom line is it really helped improve the atmosphere of our lunchroom, and so that was great to see. And then finally, our preliminary MCE scores are looking very good again, and I would expect for us to be well above the state average in science, reading, and math, and I expect us to be again, one of the top ranking middle schools in the state, so and then I'll throw in the last thing is, I'm really looking forward for all the construction to be done too.
You went through two years of that, right? That's, yeah, two, two school years.
I told, I told our staff at the beginning, when this all started, and I'll continue to tell them, three things. We need to be patient, we need to be understanding, and we need to be flexible with all the construction going on, and obviously they've done that, and our students too, so it was a great year, all in all, so.
And if you maintain the test scores, I think that says a lot.
You know what, it, I think comes down, we have, we have great kids, we have a great staff, and we have a great supportive community, and to me, that equals the great results that we've gotten the last few years, many years, so.
I, another question regarding the curriculum with the pool, have you set that, how much will these kids be, was he in the swimming pool?
Great question.
Yep, so we are, our FIAD staff is planning on doing two-week curriculum units. They've already planned that, that's what we're going to start off with, so every student will get two weeks of, of swimming, and they're going to, you know, it'll be from basic instruction to, you know, some fitness things and, and games that are incorporated, and obviously going down to the aquatic center and, and visiting there, and having my own son who's going to be in middle school, he doesn't want to leave that pool. I mean, he can spend all day there, and you know, we got to kind of drag him out, so I think the kids are really going to enjoy that opportunity as part of our curriculum, and, and I know the staff will, will too, so we're looking forward to that.
Good. Any other questions?
Could they spend their lunch, if they want, in the pool?
I'm sure.
Or go to lunch.
Sure they would like to, but yeah, I'm sure they would, yeah.
Be a little hungry for the afternoon, I think.
Probably, well, the, the sixth graders will get to use it after lunch for their FIAD, because that's when their FIAD time is, so they, they will after lunch, so.
Well, yeah, it was, you know, very interesting two years, especially this past year with the, you know, did not look the greatest in the C E C for the first half of the year, the kids going there, and then again, walking back and forth for nine and a half years, and now that they're at the middle school, totally renovated, beautiful area, you know, it's all worth it, but they, they were very flexible, very patient, very understanding. Brad's leadership and his staff did a great job, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, very, very fortunate to be principal of the middle school with our great kids and staff, and obviously with our community supporting, you know, the new, the new facilities and stuff too, it's.
Yeah, you didn't hear a whole lot of complaining about what the sixth graders had to go through, which was great, that
Right.
Students and parents understood it.
I think what they did, they did see is the end product too, and that's what I can, this is going to be nice, and you know what? As I look back and reflect upon the move, I don't even remember it, but that could be getting older too. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad. And now, Principal Dave Geeson from Falcon Ridge Elementary, who is working out of the district office, him and his support staff are based here now for the summer.
He's got a PowerPoint.
I'd go with a PowerPoint tonight, and I know that didn't make Mr. Gregor very happy, but.
Your job is not to make him happy.
No, and we've really enjoyed being here at the district office, being housed up here, and I had a hard time understanding why we couldn't be in our building with summer construction, and my first trip down there, I understood why we couldn't be there, it's pretty intense, so. So no, our, our summer is moving along very well, very quickly, but my goal tonight is to give you guys kind of an update on the end of our year, and kind of a, a look towards the, the upcoming school year or so. I'm going to try to jog back and forth between pictures and then talking here and not, not mix it up too much, but again, our focus is going from good to great at Falcon Ridge. As Brad talked about, we have outstanding kids, along with our outstanding staff and an extremely supportive community. We were just talking before the meeting, I talked to a, a former colleague, or a former colleague, a, a teacher that was in our district for many years and is not here any longer, and they just made the comment over the weekend how fortunate we are to be here in New Prague, and it just really underscores and reemphasizes what we have going here, so very thankful to be a part of a, a great district and a great community. I'm going to hit on some student celebrations tonight, talk a little bit about academics. Want to give a little bit of an update in terms of our building and enrollment, and then talk a little bit about community outreach, so those are the, the four areas that I want to hit on. One of the things is we talk about focusing on the whole child, both the academic side and then the social emotional side. We believe strongly in celebrating small wins and student successes, and we did that at the end of the year with something we call a Making Your Mark Award, I don't know if you guys, can you see this right now?
Yep.
Okay. So this is Nate Erickson, and a Making Your Mark Award is something that's given to kids that are nominated by a staff member for going above and beyond, and we try to do this on the average about once a month, I don't think we hit that quite this year, but we invite parents in and really celebrate, not just doing a, a great job of going above and beyond, and we're really proud of the fact that kids hopefully enjoy this type of recognition, we have staff that are looking for it and parents have, that are again, supporting it. During that same all-school meeting, we sent off our fifth graders, we had the music going and kind of gave them a tunnel here where they all walked out and, almost like a mini graduation, but again, celebrating the little things, and, you know, sending on a very exceptional group of fifth graders, so you can just see by the looks on the kids' faces, young and old, and some of the staff members, they really got into it and had a good time with that. Starting off next year, we'll once again focus on our PBIS type work with a red carpet welcome back, a welcome back picnic where all of our families are invited back for a free picnic, inflatables, things like that, and then we're going to be doing a first-ever Apex Fun Run, and this is kind of modeled after something that Eagleview has done, but it really incorporates fitness along with decision-making and character building, where for a couple of weeks, we have very energetic, very positive young adults who come to speak to our kids about being a good example, making good decisions, and then incorporating fitness in, and it, it turns into a fundraiser, but again, we kind of stole the idea from Eagleview and are looking forward to doing that next year. As we look ahead to academics, and I'm speaking more on behalf of Raven Stream and Eagleview, our three elementaries are going to be really diving into learning more about a balanced literacy approach, our focus is definitely going to be on reading and incorporating not only a love of reading, but the skills and strategies that make good young readers. The biggest increase that I'm going to be telling our parents is that they can see an increase, a large increase in the number of books that are accessible to kids, most importantly, kids, books that are at their reading level. So that's going to be a focus for us next year, along with goal setting, academic goal setting that we'll be doing with our leadership teams come August. One thing to touch on with our student celebrations, we've got an all-student picture right here, we had a an all-school picnic, and we didn't know how this would go, but we got all of our kids out onto the playground to eat a bag lunch for one day in May, and we were kind of privy to Trojan Stadium, we had activities going on outside of the school, but I had great support from our staff who got out there and played with kids, and this picture was taken from the rooftop at Falcon Ridge, but we got as many crammed in there as we could, so all-school picnic was definitely a blast. Turning to our building, for anybody that's familiar with Falcon Ridge or has walked through, we're known for some of those accordion or folding walls, and those were gone within probably the first three days of the summer. The goal there is to have more permanent walls that would better contain sound, and I think these will do that. So those walls came down very quickly, the sheet rock walls going up have taken a little more time, but also, again, a trademark to Falcon Ridge were those big basins sinks, those are gone, and these are more of those motion censored hand washing stations, and I know our kids and staff will be excited to have these. Couple other things that are being worked on in our building, and I think you guys are very well aware of this, but if you've driven by Falcon Ridge, you see big pieces of steel is what it looks like, but it's part of our HVAC system, the HVAC, which is really going to bring better air quality to our building, those are going to be going up on the roof very soon. Brand-new lights, seems like a little thing, but I'm really excited to have the old fluorescent lights out, and then kind of the soft LED lights like we have right in here. You saw the bathrooms a little bit, we're going to have new partitions in there along with some tile work, and then a brand-new gym floor, that'll be the very last thing that's done this summer. The gym right now is a staging area, if you walked into that right now, you'd see scaffolding materials, all the things that are needed for the summer in there right now, but brand-new floor going in at the end of the summer. And then we hope to have some additional landscaping on the outside of the building again towards the end of August. Community outreach, we're looking forward to partnering with Malastrana this next coming school year and doing some different things with our kids, working with the residents over there, and that's something that's been happening for a number of years, but we're looking to expand upon that. I have been in touch with the director at Malastrana, and we're trying to put programming together where our kids can work with the adults there and the residents, and hopefully make it a great partnership for everybody. We're also looking to have some of our Falcon Ridge dads, some people that are skilled in the trades or have machinery, local contractors come and do some work, kind of in those Falcon Ridge woods. We call them where we want to get an outdoor classroom area in, along with some benches and some seating where kids can be reading outside. So we're looking to take kind of a Saturday or Sunday where those dads are donating of their own time, and yet they're donating and using again machinery and, and their knowledge, and we're looking to hopefully make our outdoor area even better than it is right now. And then lastly, I want to hit on, again, something that maybe if you follow social media, you've heard of, but all three of our elementary buildings put pop tab houses into the buildings in an effort to raise awareness for the Ronald McDonald House. In doing so, they made a summer collection and brought everything that had been brought in over the course of the year. We're happy to announce that between the three elementaries, there was nine hundred ninety-seven pounds of pop tabs, which equated to the estimated about one point four million, so that's a tribute to our kids, our families, and again, just trying to do little things that make a big difference, but you can see this truckload right here, and then some of the staff members that contributed to that delivery just a couple of weeks ago, so. Questions on anything? Right, thank you.
Brad can run down and take some pictures real quick.
Thanks, David.
Next we have our levy renewal discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to start out by just reviewing some of the stuff that we've already talked about, or that Sandy and I shared, both from the budget presentation that Sandy did, and the operating levy renewal discussion that we had at our last meeting, and it wasn't that long ago, but that we had a meeting, but just want to talk about it tonight, and then I want to open it up for questions and discussion, and this is just the starting point of this presentation, so go ahead. I think one of the things, as, as I left the last meeting, is really why the need? And basically, it's to hire and retain outstanding teachers and staff, this is money that goes in the general fund, technology, we have to stay up to date on that, and just to really maintain our current programming needs, you know, whether it's curriculum or some of our new high school classes, just all of our learning opportunities for our kids to meet their needs. Now, just to review here quickly, our general fund, which we're talking about when we talk about local operating levy, eighty-five percent of our money comes from the state, so when the state finish their session and they put two percent, two percent to the formula, that's where that eighty-five percent is. Local property taxes, local revenue accounts for about ten percent, and then we have federal is two point six, and then others one point eight, so we really don't get much federal education money. Our demographics aren't similar to some other districts where they qualify for more, we don't have any title programs or anything like that. So the current levy, basically, seven hundred and twenty-four is, when it says local optional revenue and board converted is board-approved revenue. So that's what you've approved, seven twenty-four, the voter-approved is an additional one hundred and forty-six dollars, and that was from two thousand eleven, when we had the last operating levy election, and it was a five-year, but they did not start till two thousand thirteen, fourteen, so this year, seventeen eighteen is the fifth and final year of the operating levy, and it will run out unless we renew or renew it and increase the, the total, so right now, we're getting eight hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents per student. So this expires, like I said, this next year, at a hundred and forty-six dollars, so if we did not have that annual revenue of that one forty-six, the voter-approved, we would lose six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which would be, would put quite a hit to our budget. Here's competitive data from comparable, or ten comparable districts, and you can see some are at the minimum, we're about right in the middle there, and then you can see Monticello, Big Lake, Northfield, that's how much they're getting, and in the red there, like Northfield and Big Lake, they also have a technology levy on top of it too. So that's sort of figured in into the total amount, so that's how much they're getting per kid, so when you hear about that it's not an equal funding system in Minnesota, it is true. There are districts at the cap, especially districts that are very commercial-based, such as Minnetoka, for example, that are getting about twenty-five hundred dollars per student. Here are three districts that I think families look at when they're moving to Minnesota or outside the metro area. It's Prior Lake, Lakeville, and Northfield, and you can see where we rate in comparison to them, and again, Lakeville also, just like Northfield, has a technology levy on top of it. The statewide average is almost thirteen hundred dollars per student. And then, you know, Sandy presented this, our fund balance, and some of you are in the board back in two thousand seven, eight, things weren't pretty then. With our fund balance, it was very, very low, and we've gradually built it up, and right now, we're projected after this year, when the audit comes, to be down quite a bit, and then projected more for the following year, down to five million, so we're going right now at about nine point three, or nine point one, I should say, to seven point nine, down to five million the following year, so and basically, the reason for that is the special education funding, we get less from federal, the state changed their formula, which allows less money for us, and then also, obviously, salaries make up for eighty-five percent of our general fund, basically, and it's not, basically not keeping up in pace with inflation. So some factors to consider, you know, my recommendation is that we go as low as a tax impact as we can, or, or increase on our residents, on our businesses, and agriculture. I've showed you, you need to look at the comparable districts and statewide average, which we are low. We don't know the future for legislative funding. Enrollment growth is a positive thing, and that could, you know, lessen the decrease for a little bit, and I will say this, we will have budget reductions if we just did renewal only. We shared this information with you, if we increased by a hundred, increased by a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars, what the additional revenue would be, and what the tax impact would be. You can see eighty-four dollars a year if it went up, two hundred sixty-three dollars a year if one fifty, and forty-two dollars a year, which is, I mean, obviously, you can do the math, just not even fourteen dollars, or You can see $84 a year if it went up, $263 a year if 150, and $42 a year, which is, I mean, obviously you can do the math, just not even $14 or about three, not even $4 a month. So the decisions that I think you need to talk about right now and discuss, first of all, whether to hold a special election. What the levy amount should be, whether it's renewal, whether it's renewal in 200, 150, 100 increase. The levy type, which I know we talked a little bit, just because we just did a bond referendum and the impact we've had on agriculture. My, my recommendation right now would, to stay with an operating levy, whether than, than doing a capital one. How many questions, whether you want one question, two question, and then the number of years. We can go most likely a minimum of five to a maximum of 10. So I'll just open it up with that.
I have a question, if you do a 10-year levy and then decide after six years, maybe it needs to be increased, can you go ahead?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. And that's a very important note. Sandy, I have talked about this a lot and again, I'm very, and I, I know you are too, very sensitive about the tax impact, but we need enough of an increase, a minimum increase. But we just don't know the future with legislative funding, so if it's two years or four years down the road, yes, we can come back and, you know, do a, a greater increase if that's what we need. Right now, it's, you know, our, our projected fund balance obviously is going down. We're still in a good situation, but we don't know what the future holds. So that is a very important factor in this whole thing.
We've just been growing so much more than, you know, what had been projected just a few years ago, that, that can change. You know, and I know you have increased costs with increased attendance, but it can, if we're trying, planning on decreasing attendance, then that, you know, if it's gonna stay steady, that would be better.
At one time, there was an inflation factor talked about, is that even relevant anymore, or that you could put an inflation factor? I think that was maybe the last time we went for our operating levy that, and I'm not sure if it's even relevant anymore.
Yeah, and then Sandy's gonna talk about that. When we did 2011, we renewed with a $100 increase, that's what we did. So, and then when the state legislature changed things, the amount changed a little bit, but basically, that's what we did. You wanna talk about the inflation?
Can do an inflation factor in an operating levy question. Taxpayers have a tendency to not like that very much, so many school districts do not do that, because it has a negative impact on passage rates.
Well, how do they even determine an inflation factor?
The MDE has a formula that they use and there's a, you know, spreadsheet every year that they update out on their website.
So what were typical?
Between 1.5 and 2.5% a year.
And if we did a 10-year, we could come back in two years even, right, or anytime, anytime, okay.
Yes, they have to be held in November, but yes, you can, some districts have many operating levies expiring at different times.
And then just to clarify, if we would go with a $100 increase, we'd be asking for about $970, correct? We're at 870?
Right, 870 to 970.
And 970.
We get, just to clarify that, we go from, it's based on per pupil, so, yeah, we'd get, instead of $870 per student or 871, we get 971. So still well below the state average. I think, keep that in mind, not near as, not even half of what Northfield's doing. And again, I think, I think it's very important to be sensitive on the, you know, just the whole thing of taxes, especially coming off a bond referendum election a couple of years ago.
Well, in the question, we're probably actually raising it from 147 to 1 whatever it is.
It's really 247, that's voter-approved, you're right. I'm just giving you the total, along with the board-approved one.
Okay, but if it fails, we would lose that nine, we would only lose 247, correct, and not the?
We'd lose the 147.
147, I'm sorry, yes, I'm jumping ahead there, yes, okay.
Which would be the 654,000.
Right, right.
The current levy would, would stay in effect.
The board approves.
Yeah, the board approves, yes.
The minimum, the minimum is, the minimum would go back to 724.
Yes, and that's what gets confusing at times, because they're different, but, okay.
That maintains it's.
Well, it does for the people and stuff, for us sometimes.
For everyone.
Yes, for us too. I mean, I guess I mentioned, or gave my opinion last time, I certainly would like to stick with the one question, just a matter of how much we increase it and how many years. And I wouldn't mind going six years again, that's what we, we just came off six, or was it five?
Five.
Five, I mean, I wouldn't mind going six.
Sandy, do you have data on how many school districts go with a 10, the maximum, versus what we've typically done is the five and the six year, right?
Right, I don't have any data on that. And I could maybe get some from the Minnesota Department of Education, it's possible, on how, you know, how long levies typically are.
Okay.
I will make a note to do that.
Is there an advantage whether you do five, six, 10, I mean?
Well, there's pros and cons to it. You do 10, but you're, you don't, you just don't know what the future is, type of thing.
Yeah.
The, the con on going shorter, five or six, I mean, it just seemed like we just passed operating level and going back again.
But I, I wonder if some of those that go 10 don't come back in five years again?
I, I'll be honest with you, I'm comfortable with six, I think. And, and I will say this, I think, I'm a very simple person, I think it needs to be understood easily, but I prefer the one question.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
And again, I can't stress this enough, I think we go as, as low as we can. If we need to go, if, if down the road, funding is frozen or at the state level it gets bad, we can, can always go back. But I'd like to prefer to keep it as low as we can.
Right, I guess all I had, I wouldn't mind keeping it at just a $100 increase if we're okay with that.
That would be the same thing that was voted on in 2011.
And not go with the $100?
No, we did, that's why, yeah.
Yes, yes, okay.
Well, why don't you think about that, with our, our meeting, we're gonna have a special business meeting to vote on this on July 31st. And we'll have a special meeting on that, it'll be at 9 o'clock AM. And if there's any other data I can give you, if you have any other questions, but Sandy will dig that up and, and I'll take a look at things too. If there's any other data or information you need, or any other factors to consider, I think, I think it's the best thing we can do right now.
Sandy, for technology, you, you can utilize the general fund for that, right?
Okay, so that's what we're doing today, or operating capital, you can use that as well.
And, yeah, and for us, if, if we went for renewal with a $100 increase, I mean, big thing is keep up with technology. We, we're not, you know, like you saw, some districts have both operating levy plus a capital levy or a technology levy too. But, you know, I think we've been very good with our money and how we're spending it and very cautious with it. And it's allowed us to, you know, have a healthy fund balance, but we're using general fund money for all of our technology needs right now. But if we don't, I, there has to be some increase just for the technology alone, because it's changing.
Well, technology is an integral part of education now, it's not like an extra.
No, it's not an extra.
Nice thing to have, so.
Right, and I think to do it out of an operating levy is fine, especially after coming off a bond referendum where it's affected agriculture so much. Even with the 40% tax rebate, I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think the right thing to do is do an operating levy and sharing the cost.
I look at this as kind of a maintenance type of a situation as far as asking for the $100. I think that we need to keep pace with what other districts are doing, what other costs that are rising. And I, I look at this as being quite minimal in the amount, $100 is not an exorbitant amount at all. And I think it's, to me, it strikes me as being kind of a maintenance amount that we're asking for.
I agree.
And I wanna just follow up on the agriculture, I keep harping on it and Tim alluded, agriculture does support this school district very well, from what I've seen. It's just, sometimes it does get a little out of proportion, but by no means does agriculture reject what this school district is doing. And I hope I don't convey that message, they're very supportive of it.
And I would say this, at the meetings that we held for the, you know, my presentations before the bond referendum. The people from, the farmers and people that live on agricultural, very, very supportive, very honest too. Some of them said they, they just couldn't support it because of the unfair taxing, that was before the, what the state legislature did this past spring. But they were still very supportive of the school system, which you don't get that in all school districts, I'm just gonna tell you that. So I, it was very positive, even though not everyone agreed probably to vote yes or whatever, but we did have overwhelming support.
Anything else? Okay, next we have a resolution for a fund transfer.
Yes, we have been talking lately about negative lunch account balances and this is a follow-up to that. We have some accounts that are relatively old that we need to write off in the food service account. We also have some that we've turned over for collections that we're not getting any action on. So we are gonna be writing those accounts off, the total is $2,640.24. And per federal guidelines, we have to use general fund money to offset that. You can't use the federal food service money to offset writing off bad debt. So this resolution will just transfer money from the general fund to restore those funds to the, to the food service fund. And we hope that, you know, in the future, this, I mean, this isn't bad for basically four or five years worth of, of, of data. You know, we are, we've put in place some things that will prevent this from happening in the future. We'll always have someone collectible, that's just the way it is. And so we will probably be doing this on an annual basis, but this is the right thing to do, to get it off our books and to move forward.
At this time, I'll accept the motion to consider the resolution to make a permanent fund transfer from Fund 01 to Fund 02.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the national school lunch program and the school breakfast program, regulations do not allow nonprofit school food service accounts to absorb operating losses due to bad debt, whereas the non-NNSFSA funds must be used to restore identified and recorded bad debt. Whereas New Prague Area Schools has identified and recorded $2,640.24 in bad debt in the Nutrition Services Fund 02 as of June 30th, 2017. Now therefore, be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague Area Schools will transfer $2,640.24 of its unassigned general fund balance to the Nutrition Services Fund 02 effective June 30th, 2017. How do you vote on this, Sherri?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next we have to approve the grant from the New Prague Area Education Foundation, since it's over $1,000.
Do you wanna describe the grant or what it's for, maybe, or?
Yeah, there's three grants that they're awarding, one to Raven Stream. Two to Raven Stream. Two to Raven Stream, one for assisting in the students find motor skills when using technology. And one for character-building activities, including read-alouds videos and other active, activity lessons during snack time. Eagleview is getting some Magna Tiles and their learning tools to be used in math and science as a STEM extension activity.
I'll make a motion, we approve the grants from the Education Foundation.
Second.
Second motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Finally, we need to approve the elementary handbook.
I make a motion to approve the 2017-2018 elementary handbook.
Second. This is all similar to?
Yeah, it's, we've gone several years without it, yes.
Updated dates.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.